Okay, we're recording.
All right, we are going to start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Becky, will you start with roll call, please?
Yes, of course. Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Scottrey.
Here.
Mr. Jerk.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olufsen.
Here.
Mr. Scott here, Mr. Strobel.
Here.
Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Albright.
And it should be noted that Mr. Jerk, Ms. Bell, and Ms. Olufsen are participating via phone. Okay. The procedures for public participation are listed on the first page of the agenda. Do we have any agenda edits?
There are no agenda edits.
Looks like the student board representative report.
So for the primary center? For the primary center, the, for academics, primary students are completing their benchmark assessments. For extracurricular, DBAIC, share their appreciation to the whole police via the Facebook. For cultural, the Bosmer arts for December will announce this past week. For the DBAIC, academically, students are taking their mid-year math checkpoint assessments. Extracurricular, the students will have their band and chorus concert, the 11th. Cultural, the students are really enjoying their afternoon math breaks. DBMS, academically, the students got preview of the different electives at the high school. In computer, the students are learning about social media awareness. Extracurricularly, student council is selling candy at the school store to fundraise for a water bottle filler. Culturally, the middle school celebrates teacher appreciation week.
At the high school, for academics, there will be an instant decision day for Alvernia University on the 26th of this month. Extracurricular, the place of media is putting on a film festival where students and staff can create short films. And at the end of the festival, there will be a vote for the best film in each category. On the cultural, students, seniors selected their class and parrot lidoes at the senior breakfast. And the Angela Hall blood drive took place in December. In addition to our normal report, we also have the board report for the student government. I'll be reading this on behalf of the president, Maya Carle. Hello is a summary of this year's past and future accomplishments and activities of the student government. However, we would first like to thank you for those who have made these events possible. Thank you to our administration at the high school and the district levels for being supportive and helpful throughout the endeavors of this year. Thank you to the school board for always trying to put the needs of our students first. We would like to also thank our high school staff for helping us have a safe and enjoyable year. And I go on to summarize what they did this past year. Homecoming, they had spirit week. They had powder puff, homecoming dance, homecoming court, middle school pep rally, all sports captains visiting elementary, schools for recess, the winter formal, the blood drive, sad club, spirit week, winter concerts, band choir. And feature events that they planned, the district wide food tribe, I believe they're planning that for the spring, winter prep rally, spring pep rally, finalizing the review of their constitution and Bible laws, election for next year's candidate, and scott recipient selection. I look forward to speaking with you again on the spring to report on future events we listed and to inform you of our plans for the 2022, 2023 school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I failed to mention earlier that there will be an exec session following the meeting. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I just would like to welcome the new committee chairs and the respective members of the board on those committees as we reorganized and continue our work together serving students and families of our community here. Brief COVID update, reported cases and identified close contacts continue to increase with this most recent surge, which increased the number of identified close contacts, therefore increasing the number of students who are requesting a digital learning platform, which we still have available for those families who so choose to participate in that. The administration will be requesting the board during discussion this evening and address any questions that they may have related to taking action on the subsequent meeting at the end of this month to modify our school year calendar this year, Wednesday, March 2nd, and Wednesday, April 6th of 2022, allowing for some additional in-service time for district professional staff. So we'll be requesting the addition of two half-days coming up in those months of March and April. And just a precursor to our curriculum and instruction committee meeting that will be prior to the voting meeting on the 24th, coming up Monday, the 24th. Mr. Towers, principal of middle school, will have a presentation related to program course of studies. If you remember back before the winter break, the board did approve that for the high school. However, after the vote for the rightsizing of the district buildings, we said we would come back and do a presentation because of the grade five through eight lower house, upper house structure and how it would modify some of the schedule there with what they're looking to do to offer in the form of related studies and encores to our students at those levels. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Kuber. Moving on to finance. What am I supposed to say about that?
Just ask if there are any questions related to those.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions related to finance? Any public comment related to finance? All right. Moving on. Programs. Am I supposed to read the motions?
No, just ask if anybody has any questions.
Does anybody have any questions as far as programming? Crickets? All right, moving on. Any public comment?
We could give more of a hard time if you want.
No, I prefer not a hard time. I don't have my glasses, so it's making it a lot of fun anyway. Personnel. Any questions or comments on personnel? Public comment? This job's easier than I thought. Programs. Nope, we already did programs, personnel.
Presentations.
All right, presentations by board members. Let's start with Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. That sounds pretty professional.
I know.
I don't have anything to report. I have not received anything over the last month. Thank you.
Okay. The Berks County Intermediate Unit report, Mr. Jerk.
I don't have anything to report at this time in the Berks County Intermediate.
All right, thank you. The Berks Career and Technology Report, Mrs. Thompson.
We met on December 9th. They offered a four-year agreement with the DCTC Educators Association. For the position for next year, they look with 70% decrease, but we have to cover the transportation to DCTC. And they would like to get in the elementary schools next meeting.
Mr. Strobel, the legislative report.
Yes, I was unable to attend the last report, but I did get the notes. And the main step of that meeting would be based on, they were going, talking about charter schools reforming, reform and how we pay them and the amounts that they get. And I'd say 90% of the meeting was geared around that. The rest is just things that they were fighting out in Harrisburg for different things.
Okay. All right. Is there a public comment on any of the reports? All right, moving on to enrollment. The monthly headcount statistics are there. Any public comment on enrollment? All right, Policy Review Committee. Mr. Scott.
I, Rob, didn't we, we already covered this at the last meeting? We just, we were supposed to have-
Because we didn't meet, we didn't-
Tonight would have been my policy meeting.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And I think we're having that at the end of the month.
Got it.
Or, no, I should say beginning of next month.
Right.
So I have nothing to report.
Okay. Any public comment on policy? All right, facilities and transportation, probably going to be the same kind of situation. Mr. Strobel.
Did not have, I was unable to attend the meeting. I was in California, but I do have some notes from it.
Okay.
You know, Rob, the only ones I have is from the 11th, 8th. I didn't have the 12th. Did we have one in December? Did we have one in December? Yeah.
We had one in December. We went over that. And again, it would have been tonight would have been the meeting for that. And so that resume is already canceled.
Okay. 11th, 8th, I already gave the report.
Gotcha. So moving on to extracurricular, it seems like that's going to be pretty much the case for everything because they were all canceled, the last meetings.
Yeah, next meeting's February for us.
Okay. So extracur-
Yeah, hi, this is Julia. The only thing I wanted to say is there is a report for finance just because we had a budget workshop. But I think you're correct about all the rest of them.
All right.
Okay. Any, I just want to keep asking if there's any public comment for any of these. Going on to curriculum and instruction, that's mine. I will tell you that we did not meet this past, I came. I didn't get the memo that we weren't meeting. And I stood outside for a while, but that report would have also been in the previous month. Finance. Julia, you say there's something?
Yeah, and I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna throw it over to Ms. Haynes to summarize what we discussed at the meeting, if that's okay?
Yep.
Okay, on Thursday last week, we had a budget workshop meeting. We went over mostly just the preliminary budget. At this point, it's very preliminary where, you know, we haven't even got numbers from the state. However, the main part of the conversation was whether we wanted to go the accelerated route or the longer route. And it was brought out of the finance committee that was on the agenda at the beginning when we were going over the accelerated budget. I'm doubt resolution. This simply means that we stay within the four and a half percent that the state is giving us, and we don't go above that. Not to say that you need to go to four and a half percent either, but it just, it keeps us a tax up as opposed to the way that we've done it in the past. We went over just a couple of, two of the numbers. We did a brief overview of all the budget and, you know, I did the 1.5 million and a four and a half increase. And we went through some of the revenue numbers that I'm anticipating and the expenditures. So I only increased anything that's 65.9 right now for expenditures, but again, it's still worth it, probably. Any questions?
All right, thank you. Old business. Any public comment on old business? New business? Any public comment on new business?
This is where the item is, Ms. Albright, on the addition of those two early dismissal days that are referenced in my superintendent's report.
Yes.
The board has any questions, further questions related to those? I can address those. Pardon me?
Can you repeat that one or not?
Yes, the addition of two early dismissal days adding to the school events calendar for this school year to work, the administration asking for an adjustment for that, for the board to take action at our voting meeting on the 24th to reflect that change so that we can add two early dismissal days to provide some professional learning for our staff in the afternoons of those days. They're both Wednesdays, first Wednesday of each one of those respective ones.
So does anybody have any questions on that? No?
You know, professional learning, does that involve everybody? Does that involve all the teachers?
It'll be all the professional staff, yes, teachers.
Okay, are there any presentations by the public on any issues? Sure.
Rachel Markle, Harrisburg. My question is on actually what you were just discussing about the professional learning. Is there any way for parents to know what you're teaching? Like, you know, if you're going to teach CRT, I would say don't bother. CRT or SEL? Is there any way to find out like what your professional learning is?
I can, I can address those questions, you know, via the website, if you have them, so.
Perfect, yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Justin. I'm from Slidrow. So I actually wanted to address something that I did just start about, which is the lifting of the mask requirement at this time. So right away, I want to come, I want to let you know that I by no means want masks for the rest of the year. I don't like them. And I'm sure a lot of people don't like them. But now I understood the dashboard a little bit better and the filters. And I went through the filters and the numbers are pretty concerning and alarming. So these are like Daniel Boone's factual, like in-your-face numbers. So it's not a case of do masks work or do they don't work? I'm not here to talk about if they work or they don't. We have to look at Daniel Boone's numbers. And so I did some filtering. So three weeks prior to the lifting of the mask requirements, so that's when they still had to wear masks, there was a district-wide total of 45 from all the schools together. Now, I filtered out the numbers three weeks after the masks were lifted. And that was a district-wide total of 191. And that's with the holiday in there. So there was days taken out of there. So that's an increased number of 324%. High school cases alone was 508%. And that's, I have the dashboard numbers here, the three weeks that I filtered, if you guys want to see, and how I got the percentage of the increase. So that's just in three weeks. The three weeks prior to masks not being, I mean, people having to wear it, and three weeks after. So that's, like I said, over 100 and, or 324%. So masks are not political, that's a fact. But I do believe that they're being used as a political tool sometimes. And I don't, this is not coming from any side of that. This is literally just coming from a number side. And maybe December, I think maybe not have been the perfect time to get rid of masks. You know what I'm saying? I'm thinking maybe in a couple of weeks, maybe in a month or so or more. I don't, I have no idea. But I just think that numbers literally don't lie and masks do work. Because if they didn't work, my daughter who, I got a call, she was being, she was exposed over the weekend. I got a call, which was my second, by the way. My first one was my son earlier. The nurse wouldn't have told me that if she was vaccinated and wearing a mask for the next 10 days, she can return. So if she has to wear a mask because she was exposed, my opinion says that masks work. I don't want them forever. That's just, you know, that's my thought on that. And also, I was questioning the Daniel Boone's policy on like the case number, like, how many cases do we need to go virtual? I don't want to go virtual, but is there a limit of, if we, if the numbers get to this high? Like last year, I don't know if we have that. I know other schools surrounding us have. I definitely do not want to go virtual again. So hopefully, we can be proactive about it and not maybe reactive about it. And then, and then when we, and then when it's time that we can get rid of masks, I will gladly fill my way. I don't want it forever. I just don't think now's the time.
I have a different question for you on your numbers.
Yeah.
I watched the numbers too. I've been watching them. I watch them in different states when I'm on faculty travel. And on December 9th, in Berks County, we had 190 days, seven-day average. Okay? And in December, and today, it's 1,039. It's almost, it's almost 1,000% increase.
Right.
And that's in the public because Omicron is so violently spreading.
Right.
And so that, and masks or no masks, I don't know if that matters. I'm just saying, the numbers, I'm not so sure I can take and draw that line between the masks and the increase in our school completely based on masks. That's what I'm saying. I'm not anti or for. I'm going to follow whatever's going to work first. If we want our kids to be safe, we want teachers to be safe, we want the public to be safe. I'm just saying, the numbers for me kind of tell a little bit of the, so I can't draw a direct line.
Well, that's why I say, that's why I say I'm not listening to maybe whether they work or whether they don't. I'm just looking at purely numbers.
Right.
For Daniel Boone, you know what I mean? And sure, Omicron, which, Omicron is here, that's, which makes it even more, to my point, necessary that we have it just right now. Like if, if the case is like, why aren't the nurses telling me that my daughter can return if she's wearing a mask for the next 10 days? Do you know what I'm saying?
Because that's what the, that's what the recent, I mean, they also knocked it from 10 to five days because basically they couldn't get anybody to come to work without having, without, so they're changing it as we go. I'm not disagreeing with you or agreeing with you. They're going to change it and manipulate it as needed to get what they want.
Like, like what I'm, I guess basically, I'm totally not here, and I understand both sides. I honestly do. I don't want my children to go virtual. They, they had a really hard time virtual. I want them to stay. So I'm just saying, let's be a bit proactive about it and take the political side out of it. I'm not saying that you guys are doing that. That's not at all. I'm saying, in general, we would have to be blind to see that that's not being used politically. And it shouldn't be at all. It shouldn't be.
We couldn't agree more on that piece right there.
Yeah.
But I also watched Florida for a reason because they didn't mask up and they didn't close down. And there's, there's some evidence there if you really dig into it. It's an argument that people are having all over the place. And I'm not trying to argue, I'm just pointing out that sometimes I have to look at both different news sources. Like somewhere in the middle is probably the truth. And they, and their case numbers didn't, per 100 people or per 1,000 people didn't go up higher when they didn't mask. So there's an awful lot of evidence we've heard over the year, over the last six months to a year about masks not working at all.
Right.
And what they actually do face. But also, when on the other side, I heard on the other side, it reduced 10%. The N95 is reduced by 50%. I guess what I'm just saying is I didn't want to make sure that you didn't feel like, I'm trying to go against what you're saying. Saying the numbers going up aren't correlated to the masks being worn. They're correlated more towards Omicron.
Okay, well, how do you say, well, Omicron, we don't know, okay, exactly, of Omicron.
Berks County didn't unmask, I guess.
Well, we're talking about Daniel Boone, not Berks County.
I understand.
We're talking about inside these walls.
Yeah, that's it.
I agree with you. And it's not just walls, it's inside of Berks County is what I'm saying. So I'm saying, the numbers, numbers match what's happening to the county.
Well, to your point and to almost be a bit defensive, I have not had the chance to look at Berks County's numbers. So I'm not prepared to, you know, rebuttal like, oh, well-
I just pulled them up just for the sake of pulling them up.
I have not looked at that. I just want, listen, I want our teachers to be safe. I want our kids to be safe. I don't want our teachers to have to feel like they're coming and they're getting sick from, you know, kids that are, you know, I just, I legitimately am trying to be reasonable on both sides. I can see both sides of the aisle of the argument. I just think maybe this month is not a good time to not have them.
It's hard, it's hard for me to disagree with you. I understand what you're saying.
And then we can take them off.
Those numbers are our school, so.
What's that?
Those numbers are our school.
No, I have them. If you want them.
I get it. I agree with you.
325%, that's what-
It's going up, and the other is going up 500.
High school, high school was 500, a five, it was a 500% increase. So, and just to, back to my question, is there a formula or anything like that about, do we have to go back to virtual if this many cases happen, or is that not?
I can, I can address, what I do is I address these, we address these public comment questions via the website under the school board tab.
Okay.
Responses to public questions. So typically by the conclusion of the week, you'll find some information on it on, on what that is.
Okay, so I can look for it. And then there'll be something that says if this-
If there is.
If there is one or if there isn't one.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel Tagno, of Damarity. So with the lifting and making masks optional, I want to know where the school district is going to stand on their anti-bullying policy. I've heard on a couple occurrences where parents send their kids to school, no mask. And then now they're starting to get into arguments with their friends about mask, yes, mask, no. And then on one occurrence, I've actually heard of an aide in the school building butting in, saying masks are required. So now, you're okay with that? Believe the kids about this? It's ridiculous. As far as the virtual, I said this before, why are we using virtual days for snow days? Because you're still taking away these kids to be kids. Using virtual days for snow days, it's not ending the school year any sooner. But if more snow days than three days are utilized through the year, school's extended. Take cuts from spring break, extended through the summer. Nobody wants that. Now, if snow days extend beyond three days, I can understand that. That makes sense. But nobody wants to expect, lose spring break. Nobody wants to cut their summer. Certainly, teachers don't either. So let's just save all of that for everybody. Let the kids be kids. This past Friday was a joke as far as a snow day. Over two to three inches of snow in this area. So, and that was over a less than nine hours of slow accumulation. Why? Why did we utilize that? That was terrible use of using virtual. I've also experienced where my kids have had to sign into virtual learning after an early dismissal. Why? Why are these kids having to be pushed and pushed and pushed into an education, taking away their freedom to be children? It feels like you guys are even, or the school district is not prioritizing these kids. Because as far as snow days, if the school shuts down again because of COVID, the kids are still the ones that are hurting because not every parent can stay home, work from home, be, oh, yes, let's do this and that and have all the activities for these kids to do schoolwork. Myself and my children's father, we work. We are essential, just as educators are. And I have not been able to use any time to stay home with my kids for them to do work. So if I did that, I'd lose my job, my income. My kids are now losing their shelter, warmth, food.
Your time's up.
And being able to use, use internet to do their schoolwork. So kids are still the ones losing out, not us.
I have a, I have a question for you. I'm kind of confused about- I'm, I'm kind of confused about your point about virtual or snow day. I don't know if you're quite understanding what, that wasn't a snow day, it was a virtual day, so they got credit for going, so there isn't any time taken away. A normal snow day would have, Daniel Boone doesn't have built-in days like other districts, so if they had had a snow day, you would have lost one of your vacations or it would have been extended. It wasn't just a not.
Then I must have missed that.
You know, it's okay. It's very confusing. I'm a teacher in another district and we do it different, so I know, but no, you got credit for Friday.
Right.
So you would have lost something from your either, I don't know what order we go in here, your Easter break or holiday, whatever you call it, and, or it would have been added to the end of the year. So that, if they log in, that counts, it satisfies the state's requirement, which is what we're really looking to do. So you didn't lose anything.
So then I apologize for.
No, that's, I just didn't understand if you were like four to.
No, no, I'm sorry. I have to miss that part of the handbook, so you apologize.
Yes, no, it's, it's very confusing. So no, they got credit for going, you're, you're ahead of the game.
All right.
I'm going to apologize, yeah.
Tim Towers, municipal president. I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank the school board and the district administration of personnel for the outpouring of support that my family and I received over the holidays. Special to Mr. Scott for coming to, to the service. He was certainly not the way I wanted to spend my holiday break, but my father-in-law, who lives about an hour away in Moncainway County, when we were talking, and I live in Boyertown District, and we were talking about, you know, what Boyertown and Daniel Boone and BCTC and how everybody was doing everything, he commented how wonderful and how lucky we are to live and work in, not only Boyertown, but work in Daniel Boone for the, the community that we have. So I just wanted to take that moment to publicly thank everyone for, for all of your support that we have received. So thank you.
Any other public comment? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Strobel.
I'll second.
Mrs. Thompson. Meeting adjourned.